All right, it is 6:00. I am, well, we'll open the meeting of the Planning Commission, Brainerd Planning Commission. Step one, call to order, roll call.
Duval.
Present.
Gorham.
Present.
Grunewald.
Present.
Norwood. Stangline.
Here.
Very good.
Blank and blank.
And blank and blank.
Vacant and vacant.
Watch those spaces. All right, pledge of allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the women's basketball team. In the next two games citing massive entry problems, they went as far as to the team with its roster shortage advertising via Twitter in open trials. All right, we are at number four, the election of officers. Do we have any nominations? Dangerous even going here. Do we have any nominations for the chair?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Don Gorham for chair.
Is he present tonight?
I'm hoping he's present.
Okay, very good.
I'll find out real fast.
All right, so we have one nomination. Are there any other nominations? I could do turn about as fair play, but I don't think I will. I think it might be my turn. All right, do we have to do, can we just do a roll, if we have no opposition, just do a roll call on that one? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, here I am again. Yeah. All right, with that out of the way, looking for an approval of the agenda for tonight. Oh, actually, back up, we need a vice chair. And I would like to nominate Mr. Mike Duval.
I was too slow to lean in now.
I know you were. Do we hear any other nominations for vice chair? All right, hearing none. We have a vice chair and we have a chair. We've done this before. And so.
Mr. Chair, I think we need to actually vote for him.
Well, let's do that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, there it is, we have a chair, we have a vice chair. Now, looking for approval of an agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have approval, we have a, all right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we're moving on. Approval of meetings, looking for an approval of the meetings from December 20th.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Stangline gets the second there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we have, we have minutes approved. All right, that leads us to number seven, unfinished business. We have the, we're going to continue the public hearing and, or conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed short-term rental ordinance. James, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the revised ordinance in front of the Planning Commission tonight is the recommendations from the Planning Commission from the last meeting. A couple of the things that Planning Commission wanted to see was that all existing short-term rentals were grandfathered in specifically for the municipal caps, allowing property owners to own more than one, they could be more than one in a multifamily building, but also that they would have to abide by the expiration dates of the, essentially the short-term rentals that the new ones are going to have to abide by as well. So with that, staff did highlight in there, section F is really the new section. All short-term rentals operating prior to the effective date of these standards shall be compliant with this section by December 31st of 2024. Staff did change that from 2025. From our previous conversations, we went to 2025 because we weren't grandfathering in. Going to December 31st of 2024 would make it consistent with some of the, what we've, I guess what we've been doing with our other short-term rentals with expiration dates within the conditions. So some of our short-term rentals have conditions with expirations of 2024 while some of them don't. So this would be essentially making them all consistent with that expiration date. And then the last part of it is all short-term rental properties operating prior to the effective date of these standards are exempt from paragraph D of this section, municipal caps. And with that, staff recommends holding a public hearing and approval of the proposed ordinance.
Very good. Any questions for James?
Mr. Chair. James, when I was looking at, if we could, Brent, if we could highlight the draft document, section, section F. And in there, diving from, I'm online to my, there we go. I just want to be clear on paragraph F. As it's written, it does not allow an exempted property to apply for an additional short-term rental interim use permit that would consequently further nonconformities, right? In other words, they can't take the exemption and say, I'm going to apply for another one, I'm an exempt operator?
That's not how I saw it.
Okay.
You know, if there's some language that any of the Planning Commission members could see to strengthen that, other than what I have in there, I'd certainly be open, open to it. But that's not how I would interpret it as a zoning administrator.
Another question, please, Mr. Chair. And then also just wanting to be clear that that exemption in, in D, if we could scroll upward to section D exemption there. The exemption part, where is that? Why am I not seeing it? I may be in the wrong place, I'm sorry, it is F1A still. That exemption to paragraph D is only applicable to a legal short-term rental property. So if I'm operating something without a permit and it's been going for all this time, I'm not being, I'm not given a set of rights here. And that's not the intent, correct?
That's not the intent. You could add the word legal, that's not, again, it's not how I would interpret it.
I would have some, I would suggest maybe a slight modification then, because what we're not doing, we're not exempting the property, we're exempting the, the IUP, the permit, I think, right? So specifically, the permit's what we're talking about, that if you've got a permit prior to this date, you operate under the conditions of that permit until such time as the permit is revoked.
There are two of them, the way I looked at it, there's two that were grandfathered in from the previous code. So they were homesteaded, operating from the homeowner, there was no interim use permit required. So when we drafted the new zoning code, essentially anybody operating under those conditions, the way I read it, is most likely issued then the, automatically the IUP upon adoption of the new zoning code. So I believe that's how it would go. But there are two of them that have not officially gone through that IUP process because they were grandfathered in. So that's why I listed properties rather than, just to make sure that we're covering those two properties as well.
Okay, thank you.
Are you comfortable with the language?
I think we can address it following a public hearing during discussion.
Very good. Any other questions for staff? All right, I'll open the public hearing at 6:08. Anybody that wishes to address the commission, please come on up. Do we have anybody online? Nobody online? And I think it's going to be a pretty short public hearing. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing again at 6:08. There we go. So with that being said, what kind of, Mr. Duval, do you have any changes that you'd like to make, that you'd be comfortable with, any wording changes?
I had a suggested wording change, I don't know, I will play it out there and let Director Gronvik be able to kind of see how it fits that, those two properties that don't have the permits from a previous round of this. But my suggestion was to take all short-term rental properties operating and then inserting under an existing interim use permit issued prior to the effective date of these standards are exempt. So again, between operating and prior, I would insert the phrase, under an existing interim use permit issued. So it connects to the permit, not the property, and maybe James could kind of kick that around a bit and tell us how the other properties would fit.
James?
So my understanding, I haven't, because we're looking at this right now, I haven't got a chance to take a close look at it, but I believe that's how it worked is, say, in the new zoning code, we move something from a permitted use to a conditional use. Essentially, that property then gets that conditional use permit. So in this instance, we changed the code for short-term rentals to essentially require interim use permits no matter what. Where in our previous code, if it was homesteaded, it was essentially just a permitted use, as long as you abided by the allowed use section. So to my understanding is that then they were essentially issued the interim use permits. And then based on the wording that we do where, you know, they have to have compliance by a certain date, I think they would fall into that as well. So I'm pretty confident that that would work.
Very good. Other discussion or questions? I have one. Tiffany, do you think we have crafted something that's going to pass the scrutiny of the city council? How do you think we've done it? And I'm just being pragmatic, that's why I'm asking.
I think it addresses the concerns, or most of them, that were brought up at the council meeting. It is risky to try and predict what my fellow council members will do. But I think this addresses their concerns.
So we listened and we reacted.
And I mean, that's what we were told to do.
Very good. And we, I think we did it. All right, well, if that's the end of the discussion, then I'm looking for a motion and maybe included in the motion might be the language change that we're mentioning.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to recommend the ordinance change, yeah. With the modified language, I'm looking, searching for the memo bite there and I don't have it in front of me.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Messy as it is.
Second.
We have a second. All right, any discussion? No more discussion? All right, do you want to do a roll call on this one? We don't have to do a roll call.
Duval.
Yes.
Gorham.
Yes.
Grunewald.
Yes.
Norwood. And Stangline.
Yes.
All right, very good. How many months was that? Is it a six-month process that we kind of worked our way through?
We're not done yet.
Yeah, it could come back again.
Take a little victory here, I think we did it. I hope, I hope it's, I hope we've moved on. All right, then we are moving on to a new business and we are looking at 8A, review the proposed administrative subdivision ordinance. James?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this was a staff recommendation to review this section of our subdivision ordinance which applies to administrative subdivisions. This is ones that staff can approve with the, as long as they follow all the conditions under the administrative subdivision ordinance. It's not something that has to go through the Planning Commission or city council for approval. So, and it is pretty typical from other municipalities that they do allow consolidation or splitting of, you know, anywhere from two to three properties. One of the things that I wanted to clear up with this proposed ordinance was to make things clear specifically for boundary line adjustments and consolidations. We would get a lot of questions from surveyors as well as engineers, how those worked and, and I think they, the way our wording was, they were kind of together, but the way staff is presenting it, we have clear definitions for each one of them in the proposed ordinance. The other things that staff is looking for is to allow for the adjustment or consolidate, or adjustment or consolidation of three properties rather than two. And this would help reduce the administrative subdivision burden to developers and builders. Do see this come up quite often. Right now, if somebody wanted to do this, they would actually have to plat the property, which is quite a larger process, maybe just to build a building on a single property. So they would still have to abide by all of the zoning regulations, we have lot size maximums, we have density requirements. So those would still all play into consideration whether or not we'd be able to administratively consolidate it. But I think this would make it better for developers. Also, kind of a small one is allow for the base lot subdivision of commercial buildings. So this is essentially, when you have, say, a strip mall that we have in northeast Brainerd that would have the seed company, the Cashwise Liquors, right now that one has essentially a base lot subdivision where you're kind of conduing that out. Right now, we allow for residential buildings to do that, a lot of other ordinances also allow that to be administratively done with commercial buildings as well. And then the other thing that staff is looking for is say to clear restriction on when the parcel can be administratively subdivided in the future. So we've gotten questions in the past from other developers, you know, can I split this and then next year if I want to build, can I, can I split again? And it's not clearly defined in our code when you're able to do that. So, you know, I didn't have a lot of good, I guess, examples of other subdivision ordinances that include it. But it is, is something that was recommended by surveyors or engineering companies, put that into our code. Staff is recommending five years for this one. I really kind of looked at this and the one to two years I struggled with, because you could have a builder that buys a plot of land and continuously subdivides maybe one property every year, and then you're not getting maybe an orderly subdivision or utilities that need to go into it. So you could be struggling with that route. I think the five-year restriction still allows you to do it in the future, but you wouldn't really be able to, you know, try to do a development without having to do a plat. So there's still an opportunity, if somebody wants to, you know, subdivide after they've already done one subdivision, they just go through the plating process at that point. But this at least puts a timeline on when they'd be able to do it again. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Any questions? Mr. Duval.
Mr. Chair, James, could you help, help give me an example of a base lot subdivision? You know, I'm thinking that maybe that you, you keep the entire parcel sort of as a box, but you're maybe parcelling out the ownership and the footprint of a building, like a.
Exactly, like a condo or, you know, a strip mall, something like that.
Okay, so it's not like you have a duplex and you're drawing a property line through the units, through the common wall?
No.
Got it, okay. And for lot consolidations, how, how would, how would we handle wanting to, a property owner buying an adjacent property and lumping together for green space? Because we've had a lot of considerate conversation about, you know, these substandard lots, if you would, these tax forfeit lots and things, and we don't want to lose that as a potential housing opportunity by a neighbor grabbing it up and just turning into more green space for.
Yep, so.
How do we handle that or how do we sort those from the other ones that, that you may say, I don't have, I don't have an issue with it?
So I did add some wording into the consolidation portion that it's really, they have to present a building plan, there's got to be a reason for it. Is there a line going through a building potentially or utilities for consolidation? Is there a building project? So I did add that into it to have some type of reason to do it. The other portion of it, it still doesn't eliminate the zoning requirements for each zoning district. So in, for instance, like a TN1 district where a lot size can be 5,000 square feet to 7,500 square feet, you just wouldn't be able to consolidate a property next to it without a variance.
So at that point, they come back here?
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good. It seems to me that a lot of this is aimed at making your professional life easier and the work of the office easier.
It is.
And so I see no objections to it, and I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on subdivisions, so I won't weigh in with any, any weighty opinions, but I think we're, I think we're getting somewhere. What do you see as the next step? Are we going to come back and then do the hearing through the ordinance? Is that what we're looking at?
Yep, so if you guys have any ideas, you know, or direction that you'd like me to revise any sections, we can certainly do that. Otherwise, you know, be a motion to, or I guess a consensus to bring it to the next meeting and hold a public hearing.
Consensus? Yes?
Yeah, I think so for these. Are there other aspects of the subdivision ordinance you want to be developing and we just kind of do this as a packet? Then maybe we pick them, pick them off here and give you guidance or, rather than doing multiple steps, does it make sense to process pieces here and you incorporate changes?
So, you know, there may be some future considerations for the subdivision ordinance, but, you know, this is the one piece that really doesn't work all that well. The other ones, I haven't had too much of an issue at this point.
So this would make you a happy community development director?
It would.
Good, good. Well, I would say.
Because he's usually so cranky.
Exactly. Terrific, well, continue the good work on that, excellent. All right, we are flying along, we're already ready for a public forum, aren't we? I'm going to open a public forum at 6:19, I'm going to look around. Do we have anyone? Do we have anyone online? No one online? I'm going to close it at 6:19. All right, with that, we are already up to staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just wanted to update the commission on a couple items that were at the last city council meeting. The final PUD, CUP and Development Agreement for the Country Manor Development Project were approved by the city council, as well as the council also approved a tax abatement agreement with Country Manor for 45% of the local share over 10 years. So they are looking to, I think the goal is to start this next summer here on construction. The council also did pass a resolution which would give them the opportunity to start in two years instead of one, but I think the goal is to start this next summer on that project. Also, the council did deny the interim use permit for 701 Fourth Street Southwest. Staff provided a resolution for council based on their comments for that one, and that was the one where they were operating without a interim use permit as well as a rental license. So just wanted to make Planning Commission aware that they did deny that one. And lastly, staff will be attending a roundtable discussion regarding cannabis regulations in Minnesota at the end of January here. That's really kind of next on our list, and I'll probably include that at our next Planning Commission meeting, we can update that list. But land use attorneys will be present to answer questions, so hopefully I'll get some clarity on what can and can't be done with municipalities and zoning regulations and have a discussion topic, you know, potentially a draft ordinance, but for sure, hopefully a discussion topic with some direction from the Planning Commission. That's everything.
Great, thank you. All right.
Question for.
Yes, please.
Or just maybe a comment on the denial of the short-term rental and, and I, you know, I feel we have done our role as an advisory body to the city council for the things that we're responsible for. And we're responsible for things that are in harmony with the comprehensive plan and, and with the ordinance. And, and these issues that are beyond that aren't part of our decision-making or our authority here. And so it's, you know, I'm perfectly comfortable with how council has taken up those issues, even though we've made a positive recommendation that this meets, you know, the ordinance, this meets the comp plan. You know, our responsibilities and such with permitting violations and things like, that's not part of the ordinance criteria and it's not part of the comp plan that you shall not permit violators, you know. And so I think we're doing our job right. So when these things happen, I don't think that's a reflection on us not providing good guidance to city council. We've interpreted and applied the recommendations of the ordinance and the guidance that's provided in the comp plan. So, you know, if, you know, if there's a point in time where we feel like that's important supporting information, I presume we would put that into our ordinance, or our recommendations. Maybe we're recommending it with hesitation or with concern for these other issues that are not part of our world. But, but I, you know, when that happened, I was not surprised by that, but at the same time, I'm hoping the council's not expecting us to do that filtering, because I don't think that's part of our world over here, that, that we're making these recommendations on how it fits the comp plan and the, and the ordinance and so.
Mr. Duval, are you saying that our ideology is the comp plan and the ordinance?
I think that's our zone, that's our home plate.
That's mine. I like.
Touch the home plate, man.
All right, well, let's morph right into commissioner reports. Mr. Duval?
Well, the fact that we have two vacant seats was the thing that, that I wanted to reflect on here in encouraging, you know, people in the audience and people online and, and people that may watch this recorded message to think about putting their time in their community, investing their time in their community. And, and I would particularly want to, want to point out that, that, you know, having a representative planning commission to think about and process the issues that come here or to interpret the comprehensive plan are pretty valuable. If you look at the 2020 census, Brainerd's population was 53-ish, almost 54% women. And thank you for being here, Ms. Stangline, I'm going to. And also, you know, that, that there's a 10% portion of our community that is not, that's non-white, non-Hispanic, non-Latino that, that we could benefit from, from some more diversity here as well. And so I'd encourage people to apply regardless and know that you'd be welcome in here and you'll come up to speed. If you're, if you're not doing this stuff on a daily basis, you'll come up to speed fairly quickly. And encouraging people to participate in their local government and, and implement the, you know, the vision that this community has for how it's to look and how it's to feel into the future. That's all I had to say.
Excellent.
Like that.
Jeff, what you got?
I don't have anything.
Nothing. Tiffany?
Yeah, I can't really top Mike.
No, no. Well, I'm just going to do my, I do this every three or four years, I actually read the bylaws every three or four years of the Planning Commission. I recommend everyone actually check a lot, they're pretty interesting in there. Because there are some things that, there was one section, I was, where I was, I was in, I was in section 10, article 4, and it was interesting, it talked about the disclosure of a commissioner as discussed the case in front of them. In other words, if I said, well, actually I've been talking about this and I've been talking to some other commissioners, I need to disclose, you know, that I had it. We don't do that, I just think it's kind of an interesting little point in there. I think it does point to some, a point, an issue that we should probably talk about would be open meeting rules. And I think it's been many years since we've had that discussion, and it's good to keep having that discussion about who can I talk to and what can I talk about? And what, what constitutes a quorum? And, because there's even a concept to that, if I talk to Tiffany and then I talk to Mike and then Mike talks to Jeff, well, we actually have a quorum now, because we've, all are in on the same loop there. So I would say maybe at some point this year, we can kind of revisit that, some meeting where we don't have too much. It'd be interesting to kind of talk about that, just, just a refresher, especially if we get a couple new members on the group. And, because it's always, it's always helpful to think about that. And that kind of leads to the next little point in here, it was article 5, talked about education, talking about how it's important to, for the members are encouraged to be part of the budgetary process, which is interesting. And specifically, they're talking about the budget for education, the budget for thing, budget for educating the group, which is interesting, because we really don't do that. And you can even go a little further, and what is it, article 2, section 5, we have talked about the means of executing the comprehensive plan. It actually talks about the Planning Commission having a, about the importance of being involved with capital expenditures and how they're going to accomplish the comprehensive plan, which is nothing we do, but it's kind of interesting. These are tools in our toolbox that are there. I don't anticipate the city council would like us to be at budget meetings and things like this, but it is interesting that, I think we, this group has, has some teeth that we don't use, and I don't know if we should or not, but I think it's, it's, it's fun to read back through these things and just kind of rethink what was intended for the group. And what was intended is that this was a group that we would, we would look at construction budgets and say, well, this construction budget doesn't support, you know, multimodal transportation or whatever it is that we're talking about, the goals we want to achieve with the comprehensive plan. So I found that kind of interesting. I'm not encouraging that we, that we take up, take up arms and storm the city council meeting and demand a seat at the budget table, but it is kind of interesting that, that somebody at some point really imagined a more active planning commission in terms of how the city dollars are spent. And, because that is kind of the bottom line issue, the how the dollars are spent, we can talk about ideals all we want. Anyhow, so that's my every three or four year discussion on the bylaws, because I think there's some interesting things in there. That's all I had.
If you're interested in getting into the budgeting process and getting a line item in the budget, I would encourage, like, we need to start thinking about that now, because the budgeting process starts much earlier than you might imagine.
Drawing up numbers in September, what's the kind of.
Oh, no, 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 it's before, it's like, it's probably starting in April, March or April, the process starts.
Probably April.
Yeah.
James, to your knowledge, is there, has there been a line in the last few years for education of the planning commission? Has that been a line?
It's within our department. I know, I think, I believe I reached out last year with a source wall training to planning commission members, and there'll probably be another one this spring as well. Open meeting laws and, you know, the other part of it isn't as pertinent, it's information request. But I attended that one last year and, you know, definitely, you know, could welcome any of the planning commission members, I'll keep you guys. I'll keep you guys posted on that. Is there any, you know, others that you might think would be, you know, potential good trainings?
Not right off the top, but I think it's, it's always worth looking at as a group in terms of the continued education. I mean, you get a continued education just by showing up and trying to figure out what we're doing, but there's such a value in bringing in outside voices and things like this and the whole experience of actually traveling somewhere and maybe perhaps meeting with people who do the same work you do and realize that you're not alone and all that. So it's just a, more of a philosophical thought than anything else, but.
Bringing someone to us.
I kind of like that myself. I think that's a terrific idea, especially in light of the fact that most of us who are on a group like this were already overcommitted about eight different ways. Our chance of being able to travel to another, out of town for another meeting is pretty slim. Well, cool. Something to consider moving forward. And if you see any great opportunities, James, let us know. If you see any great.
Yep, definitely let you know.
Opportunities to bring people in. All right. With that, we are up to looking for a motion to adjourn.